All set?
Sixteen.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Board meeting July 21, 2020. First order of business is roll call. We are missing one member, Lee Buffington, I believe, who is standing by her phone or internet. I'm not sure which mechanism. So there are six of seven here tonight. The next item is to approve the minutes from our Zoom meeting in April. So any corrections, comments, or motions? Anne.
I do have, I have one question about language and two questions about language. On page nine, the, next to the last paragraph that starts Mike Schwint, if you'll go down to the second sentence, the second line towards the right. Mr. Schwint said that the for the justification that was provided for this parking lot, it seems that it doesn't need to take up so much ground. That doesn't make sense to me. Mr. Schwint said that the for the justification. Should it be said that the justification? That something, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I don't know if you all can hear me. I think if you remove the first the in that sentence, that's what he said.
Mr. Schwint said that for the justification that was provided for this parking lot, it seems that it doesn't need to take up so much ground. Is that what he said?
That's what he said.
Okay, fine. Just take out the.
Yeah, I got an extra the in there, sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay. And then on page sixteen. Hi, hold on a sec. We'll go to, there is, okay, sixteen. The, the first paragraph really, Rob Verrier. I'll go down to one, two, three, four, fourth line towards the right. This could slow down some of the growth which affects the school system. I think that should be affects with an A. That's all. Okay, that's all I had.
Thanks, Anne. Any others? Do you hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. A second. Steve, second. All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous, all six. The, the next item, there are staff site plan approvals. There are five separate items. And I will turn it over to Carla to summarize or otherwise present those items.
Yes, it was a busy period. We got, had five applications come in that were minor projects and they were eligible for staff review. And the first one is Cumberland Farmers Club. They were building an open-sided structure building that will contain a historic sawmill that they have acquired. So that was approved. And we approved a farm stand, the Verrel Farm Stand. That's going to be at 72 Range Road. I believe it's already there. We had a food truck, a mobile food booth is how they refer to it, Fat Guys Concessions. And they are up and operating next to Caddy Shack, the ice cream place out on Route 100. The fourth one was the cop, I'm sorry. Somebody, no, okay. The fourth one was the cop garage at 210 Gray Road. This was going to be a auto repair garage and it decided, it's been switched over to new use, which is medical caregiver. That was approved. And then the last one, the mill-run condominiums, which are out near Cop Motors, that area, they received minor staff approval for a storage shed. That's it.
Thank you. And I believe many more details are available online if somebody wants to.
That is correct.
Look these over. Any comments or questions? Yeah, Jason.
Number four, the medical caregiver, is that as in marijuana?
A medical caregiver is, I believe, does allow for marijuana. It's what, is that current? The council designated the areas where this use was allowed. And it was allowed. Medical caregiver bill inclusive of marijuana, medical marijuana, yes. Sorry, I didn't know that answer.
Josh.
Carla, on a couple of these, it talked about for fire approvals that the building wasn't occupied. And so it was not, not applicable, the standard for approval for fire code or whatever else. Is that our standard of approval, that if it's not an occupied building, then we don't have to meet any sort of fire code?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And with that cop garage, so is there an existing structure there now that's getting torn down?
There was, a long time ago, meaning like two years ago. It was taken down and there was a foundation there for quite a while. And now they're going to be building on that foundation and new structure.
And then in the conditions of approval, number three, it says there shall be no outdoor storage of more than two vehicles under repair at any one time. I, I thought they were changing the use from.
They are, and I apologize. I didn't, I didn't change that. So that is under number third, what did you say?
It was the third condition of approval.
Third condition. We will remove that.
And then just one other, it was a typo, but on Cumberland Farmers Club, on page three, and I'm trying to flip between so many of these things right now. There, at the very top, 10 dash 2 dash 1, I think, for the, there is no driveway. It, you didn't change it from the farm stand language. So for the standard of traffic circulation and parking, you, there, it, the assessment at the bottom in italics says there is no driveway where the stand will be located. Parking will be adjacent to Range Road where there is a large gravel pad, which is the exact same language.
Yeah.
That's for the Verrel Farm Stand. But this doesn't border Range Road.
Uh, yes, thank you for catching those. So I've been working from home.
And I'm not casting, I'm not trying to get the mob to come at you from behind.
No, it's okay. So that, that's what's been going on.
Yep.
It's much more difficult to open files, change files.
Yeah, Bill.
I have a question on the Fat Guys food truck. It said nothing's going to be stored outside. What are they doing with their fat grease? Normally restaurants put that in a fat bin out back to be picked up and.
They said everything's going to be stored inside and removed daily.
That'd be interesting to see how they do that. I've never seen a restaurant place store fat inside. Okay, is that what you do? You're going to take it away every day? Okay. Okay, I was. Great. I was just concerned you might have a fat thing out there. Okay, sounds great.
Absolutely not.
Good. All right, thank you.
Any others? Anne.
Yeah, I just had a question about the Fat Boys, guys, sorry.
That's a different business, that's all.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, Fat Guys Concessions. Is there going to be any new building of surface construction? No?
There will not be any.
Up on the council.
Thank you. If you could give your name and affiliation.
My name is Billy Joe Smith and I am owner of Fat Guys. There will be no building structures being built or anything like that. We are a mobile unit, so we can pick up and go at any point in time. That's why it's a mobile concessions. We normally do the fairs, but due to the fairs being closed this year, we asked if we could be stationed in that location to help keep our business going for the time being.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, the next item is minor change approvals and there are none. The next item, F hearings and presentations. Public hearing preliminary major subdivision review for Ocean View at Cumberland LLC Phase Two. Fifty-two dwelling units plus one community building. Greeley Road Tax Map RO4 Lot 34A, applicant Ocean View at Cumberland LLC. John Wazaleski, represented by Frederick Light from Light Environmental Design. And just as, it was a while ago when we did the first review and the, the, just a reminder to myself as well as anyone, is the moving of the community building was contingent on approval of Phase Two. So we're still in that, I think, under those guidelines. So is Rick or John, Chris? And, thank you.
Thank you. Everybody see and hear that okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it sounds good, I think.
Okay, just double checking. Hi, Chris Wazaleski from Ocean View at Cumberland LLC, here with Rick Light and our counsel Scott Anderson and our construction manager Christian Haynes in the back here. And also on our team, we have a traffic engineer Diane Morabito, John Wazaleski, who should be showing up here as well, and Jay David Haynes, the landscape architect, our other project engineer Chris Belanger, who does a lot of our CAD design and stormwater and hydroCAD. I will skim through this briefly since Carla had suggested I keep it brief. The town engineer comments and review edits have all been addressed, as well as any comments on fire hydrants or safety relative to Chief Small. You'll see that in the staff memo. The neighborhood buffering, some of the, I know it was a while ago since the February hearing, but some of the neighborhood buffering concerns or questions from some of the neighbors have been addressed by Rick Light and also David Haynes, our landscape architect. So we have a detail in your packet, an A buffer and a B buffer that you'll see as an exhibit. Also, Rick Light and Chris Belanger have been proceeding with all of the DEP and Army Corps of Engineers' submittals. Rick will have an anticipated timeframe based on day by day for a final permit receipt based on kind of his part and his process with the Army Corps of Engineers, with the stormwater reviewer, with Canco Road DEP and with the state DEP. Our architect, at the request of Bill Longley, the code enforcement officer for the town, Gower and Turgeon Architects of Scarborough has been retained relative to the Phase Two community center and pool concept. We're also going to retain Ledge Water Pools. It's not in your presentation, but that will be our pool contractor, Wally Gear, who's experienced and competent. Just a quick, I know you've all seen our homes through the various presentations. I just wanted to put this at the front end of the presentation as an example of a model unit. Phase One Cumberland Crossing. Some of our community amenities, again, you're familiar from our past presentations with our project and our product. We have cyclists and walkers who enjoy our trails and sidewalks. You have an example of a stone dust path, which we'll be discussing a little bit later. That's on our Falmouth campus, but similar to the one that we would create. We have pool activities. That's a water volleyball team, actually. I know, not possible right now at our current time, but looking forward to better times when we can enjoy close activities like that. And also an example of a pool concept, we, we do go for solar power and solar hot water where we can. So you can see actually a solar hot water system for the pool on the roof. Just going to skim over these really quick. Ocean View has a variety of benefits for the greater Falmouth and also now the Cumberland community. We're going to be a satellite community, 5.6 miles away from our campus. And obviously, we're going to contribute to the greater whole of the community as a part of your community, not apart from it. We, we anticipate that our residents will come from a variety of parts of the country and the state of Maine. And it will carry into their retirement their causes and their desires and their desires to help and blend in with the community, as well as good neighbors. Some of the examples of our current residents include a retired naval officer, CEO, a former CEO of a major local communications company, and a veterinarian. And I'm going to yield to Rick Light, our project engineer, just skim through the first few slides. And Rick will walk you through some of the town engineering comments, as well as some of the staff memos.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Rick Light. I thought what I would do, and thanks for the intro, Chris, is just quickly go through, just a quick timeline, just to kind of set things in motion as to what's happened since January 21st. It's hard to believe it's actually been six months to today that we were last here. And, boy, we've missed you guys. So, and then go through, we have one waiver request that hasn't been acted on. Waiver request number five about the sidewalk, I'll discuss that. And then go through comments and then quickly go through specific plan refinements, especially since it's been six months. You know, you're sitting here thinking, well, plans all look the same to me. What are the changes? So I'll quickly walk through what refinements we've made, if that suits the board. So first of all, just a quick timeline. Last meeting was January 21. And then we've had a couple of meetings with staff since then. We resubmitted in February with comments from Seavie Mohar addressed, comments from the board addressed. February 24th and then COVID hit, so no March meeting. And then we've kind of held back until now till we had a live meeting. And so we made a submittal in June, which would be called Year Addenda Two. So our addenda one, which is February 24th, and addenda two collectively are the materials that we're talking about tonight. And I think Carla and Christine, Christina made that pretty clear in the, in the application and in compiling. And, and then we've had a sit walk with John Gensenius and with Toby Young regarding trails during the winter time and had, have had some communications. So that's kind of the timeline and we're glad to be back in front of the board. So item number one, waiver request. Let's see. Best way to show this. Bear with me as I click through the plans and find the best one to show. Let me back up a little bit. Just give me a second. Yeah, this might be the best one. So as a refresher, we had quite a discussion about sidewalks at the last meeting. And I'll just quickly walk through where we have sidewalks. One, we have a sidewalk all the way from Phase One, all the way through the project on the main Little Acres Drive. And it ends just past, this is the main culvert here. Leonard Drive is this, and it ends right here where we have a crossing. Leonard Drive, which is this cul-de-sac, has a sidewalk. And, not Mallard, Monarch Way has a sidewalk as well. Typically, the side roads, which are 18 feet, we don't typically have sidewalks. It's more of a complete street policy. It's more like a private driveway and we don't feel sidewalks are really necessary on these side roads. So our request for the waiver is to simply, we don't really feel that sidewalk from this point up to the farm and up to the community center is really justified. In, in trying to keep with a context of a, really, and we've discussed this before, trying to create a park-like road out in the field there. It's all wide open, it's a beautiful setting. And to add infrastructure and a sidewalk and curbing and all, this makes it like a residential road. And we just don't feel it's going to have that much use overall. So an alternative to that, not, not to say we don't want to have connectivity, is we're providing a stone dust path across the field to our new parking, which we'll talk about, and to the barns and off the, with the crossing right here in the roadway. So that, our waiver is a request to not have a sidewalk from Station 63 to the end of the road here, but in lieu of that, having a stone dust, stone dust pathway. Okay. I don't know if the board would like to take that up now or after our discussion, take that waiver request up.
Anyone at this point have questions or comments?
I have a question. Is that walkway going to be maintained in the winter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rick, I have a question too. Given the, the opposition by John and his committee, and you, I think somewhere it said you met with him.
We met, yeah, back in February, I think we met. And we discussed.
Oh, public hearing, okay. We'll get to that, I guess. But could you, I know, we'll, we'll talk more about it is my guess, but your rationale there? I'm just curious, given the opposition by that committee, what's your?
I think it comes down to philosophy and, and sort of character. I think we are providing a lot of connectivity. And to think that, if you, if you think about this field, maybe if I jump ahead, this will help to sort of define. If you, if you stop and think about this field, the lower part of your screen here, the new roadway is going to come right where my, look at the golf green here in the, in the field, will come where the cursor is. And this wide open field has had this pathway, excuse me, has had this, this is the current tote road, which goes almost where the new roadway is going to go. So if you look at this screen, the new roadway is going to be more or less over here. And we've got a new, a wall and elevated, then it's going to scoop below the height of land. This is the approximate property line. And so we're saying we're going to have a crossing somewhere in here on the road and go up across the field. It just makes sense if you go to, we're trying to create this park-like feel. And then you go in the road to start adding a sidewalk. Means you're going to either have to have an esplanade that's going to be between you and the road and widen it and add a curvus, and then you're going to have to, or you're going to have to have the curbing, which means, means more storm drain structures. And if you look at this field and walk it, I, I challenge anybody to walk out there and stand there and look at this field and say, it just doesn't, it's just not right. Doesn't feel right to add a sidewalk along this road. It becomes a residential road. And we're not trying to do that. We're trying to keep this as a very passive and certainly walkable. There's very little, if any, traffic is going to be on this road. If you go to a state park and if you can't walk down a roadway in a state park, you go to Mount Blue, if you go to Middle Rang, these are what the road, this is what you walk on and you feel totally comfortable. And, and this is what we're trying to create. So for that reason, I, I think it's appropriate because the people can still walk to the barn. And I want to state that, and John and Chris could speak up, that the idea of using the community center, a lot of people, if they're going to use the pool, they're going to be driving around or taking, they're going to supply a van, take a van around to Main Street and back down to the pool, rather than walking here to go for a swim. You go for a swim, you're going to be all wet, you're going to have a towel, you're going to have your bag. People are certainly going to be encouraged to, and will walk here maybe for events or for collective, just for recreation. But I don't, we don't see this as a high, certainly not a high-traffic road, and, and, but this gives them the access. So I think that's our rationale.
Okay, just one other thing. I know we'll come back to this, but in terms of winter, does it stay covered? Or do you, can you actually do something with stone dust?
You can, you can snow blow stone dust. I snow blow a 3/8 inch stone driveway every winter. It works. Put the skids up an inch and.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paul. Rick, what is the width and the length of the proposed stone dust walkway?
That, I'd have to look at the plans. Bear with me for one second. I don't have the exact number. We can get those numbers for you and for staff. But it starts at this point here, goes along the shoulder and over to the barn. And this distance is about 600 feet, so probably 500, just 500 feet. We can, we can verify that, something of that nature.
And is the width comparable to the slide we saw just a few minutes ago on the Falmouth campus?
It'd be a five-foot width.
I see, five, okay. Good, thank you then.
Rick, do you know what, do you know what your, the average daily traffic of that road in that general area is supposed to be?
I can, we have our traffic engineer Diane here, but we haven't, we don't have a number, but we don't expect a lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah, I mean, more or less than 50 was really, I think, the only critical.
Less than 50?
Yeah. Okay. What, what is the average daily traffic at the other end? Because, and I don't remember, we've gone, I know we went back and forth about whether or not there was going to be access to Greeley Road or not. Looks like now you're saying there can be limited access for some people maybe going. The, the plan is that for some residents who might be going to Yarmouth. But I, we can get into that later. I know we're kind of. But what is the, do you know what the average daily traffic is at the other side?
Diane can certainly.
Going on the total?
Total average daily traffic for the entire development for Phase One and Phase Two is 448 trips. So the vast majority of those, we are assuming, are going to Tuttle.
Right. So probably greater than 50 for Tuttle and less than 50 for Little, this section of Little Acres. Okay. Now, switching, Carla. They're planning on keeping these roads private.
Correct.
Our subdivision standards have road criteria, guidelines. Does that, if, my assumption is most subdivisions want the roads to be accepted by the town. If they don't want it accepted by the town, do these standards still apply?
They, it's a good question, Josh. I, I can't even think of a time that that's happened. These, these roads are going to stay private. I, I believe they can, they can vary from the standards.
Okay. Now, here, so, so here's all of my prob, and this goes beyond the, the, the matter at hand, but it also sort of plays into it because I'm not really 100% sure you need a waiver. Because, and, and what I would say is, I, I don't think we can give a waiver today. So if you look at 250, Attachment 1 dash 2 in our code, we go through the geometric design standards. When you get to sidewalk width, for residential access less than 50, it's not applicable. So I, I don't think there's a need, I don't think there's a requirement for a sidewalk, if I'm reading this correctly. If it's more than 50, it's TBD by project, but we can't give a waiver. At the bottom of that table on the next page, it says waiver provision when a modification of these provisions will result, blah, 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 blah. Meet all that, however, may be granted by the Planning Board upon a positive recommendation by the town engineer and town planner. Well, we do not have any recommendation, positive or negative from you. But we have, we do not have a positive, we have a negative recommendation right now from the town engineer. So I'm not prepared to do a waiver tonight. I'm not, I'm not sure you need one and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but we can't do. If I, if this is correct, I don't think we can do a waiver tonight.
I, what you raised is a very good point. I'm thinking back probably 20 years when there was a subdivision that's going to be a private road and they wanted it to be gravel.
Okay, now I'm going to blow that up.
Okay.
And I brought this up twice before and nobody's ever talked about it. But if you go to Section 250, 37A dash 3, if I can find it again. But they, where is it? Residential private streets. Private streets serve as feeders to access roads, sub collectors, blah, blah. The last sentence of that, private streets are permitted only when the average daily traffic is less than 50. I don't know if we can waive that or not. Because it is a standard. And I don't know how they can have private streets if we have something in the sub, you know, in this section that says you can't have a private street if average daily traffic is 50. I'm not sure I really, as a town member, I'm not sure I really want these as town streets. But as a planning board member, I am faced with a standard we're not meeting.
If I could.
So, so the senior housing community overlay wouldn't affect this at all, Josh?
I don't know, it might.
If, if I could through the chair, I think I could clarify.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Section 315, 284 is the senior housing overlay. And within that, Section I is the road standards. Let me read what, there, there's, there are dimensional and geometric standards for roads specifically for the subdivision. And that's, and I'm, and through the chair, I totally understand the Section 250 ordinance. We've been through it as well. And this is where this, this is the catch-all.
Hey, Rick, sorry. Which, where are you, 315?
315, 284, the ordinance, and it's Section I, I guess it's, hang on a second, Section I, I believe.
I'll get there, thank you.
Page six, I believe, in my copy. Okay. Item number one, all roads within the senior housing community overlay district shall be designed in accordance with the residential sub collector's roadway standards as contained in Article 6 and Table 2 of Chapter 250, so division of land of the use of Cumberland. Two, the following road standard shall apply to all of the roads within the senior housing community. There's some grammar there. It says that all roads shall comply with 250, but all other roads shall comply with the following. Well, the following says, as we work down through, there are standards for right-of-way widths, 30 and 50 feet, and roadway pavement widths, serving less than 10 homes is 18 feet. Serving 10 or more homes is 20 feet without a curb, which we proposed, you know, going across the field, and 22 feet with a curb, which is the bulk of the, the main, the main roadway with a curb is 22 feet. Paving, paved sidewalks.
Yep.
Parenthesis applies only to primary access roads connecting from Tuttle Road, five feet, one side only. That is what we're asking, that's the, the specific ordinance that we've, section we've referenced regarding a waiver. Now, if the board feels we don't need a waiver, we're happy to, to not ask for one. But I, we felt that that was in the ordinance and that we, we best ask for a waiver from them. But I, we felt that that was in the ordinance, and that we, we best ask for a waiver from that provision. We're happy to withdraw the waiver if the board feels otherwise.
I, yep, I, I see, but I still don't see anything about the private road.
There are, there's, I don't know how to find it in here. There is language in here that allows the roads to be private, if you give me a minute. I know it's in here. Yeah, we'll have to review that, review that with staff. But no, we've, we've covered that ground, and I think we can find the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So why don't you continue now, Rick, and we'll come back, I'm sure. Jay, I'm sorry, Jason.
One more quick question. So how does somebody get from, especially in the wintertime, from the community building to Greeley Road?
From the community.
Walking.
From the community building to Greeley Road?
Yeah.
We wouldn't expect anybody would be walking from the community building to Greeley Road. If they are, they walk right down the, the access drive, it's wide open. But we wouldn't expect the residents to be walking into Greeley Road. There's no sidewalk on Greeley Road. It's only 21, 22 feet wide with a narrow shoulder. We wouldn't want the residents to be on that road, especially in the winter. Yep, and there's snowmobile, as you know, the snowmobile trail currently goes along the shoulder right here and goes out into the, you know, by Meirwind.
Okay, should we continue? Thank you.
Okay, bear with me for a second. I guess the second item was the responses to the CV Mahar comments. We had comments based on our February supplemental and the most recent one. And I believe we're pared down to just a few minor items which we're, we're in agreement with. And they agreed that most of these items could be taken care of at final. So if there's anything specific that staff or Carla wanted to address, we'd be happy to, you know, to dive into those. But I think in general, we're in pretty good shape with their, with the peer review. Unless there's any comments from the board or staff on that.
You're, you're asking specifically about SEV, about SME?
If there are any specific.
Anything at this point? Looks, looks like there aren't.
Okay, great. So let me walk through, and I'm going to be, I'm going to use the slides just as reference. So I'll be flipping back and forth. Hopefully, I'll get the best slides to produce, to reference what I'm talking about. So let's talk about some of the refinements since you, we were last in front of the board. And I'll start with utilities. We have a, we've met with, met and talked with PWD, and they're doing their final review of the water district plans. And the water system will be extended from Phase One right here through each, in a phased manner, all the way through to the barn here through an easement out to Greeley Road as originally proposed. And the difference here is that, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later, is the phasing and timing of opening the community center and getting the pool going, the need for water. So I'm going to talk about the phasing of the water a little bit later when I talk about the community center. So that is under review. The second thing we've done is at the request of the town manager and Toby, we've added an easement right in this area here to extend sewer, a force main, and I think a two-inch, two-inch water with a meter to service the potential new restrooms over by the 14th green, the 17th tee somewhere in this area here. So we've added that to the drawings. Again, I'm using the over larger scale, smaller scale drawing, but if the board wants to see any of these specifics, I can, I can refer to the larger scale plans. I guess this is probably the best one to use. Landscaping, we have had some, many communications with our landscape architect, David Haynes, to meet with Dr. Netland, who owns this property here. And we have adjusted our landscaping plan based on his suggestions and David's suggestions on plantings. And so the current landscaping plans, which are, I think, C11A, C11B. This is again, the, the field up in this area through here. And his area of concern is this section of roadway here where, if you refer to that slide I showed you earlier, there's a property line which was really in the field, so to speak. It's marked, but it's in the field. And to protect his land, if he were to ever do something in the future, we've agreed to put a series of plantings in this buffer area here along the right side of the road. And that planting area is called Area B. It's a landscaping area, it's shown here graphically. And what David has done, our landscape architect, is, is given a palette of different plants. And there's a note here that talks about that. And we'll work out, as we do, Ocean Beach does with all the butters, and as we did with Mr. Don, is walk out in the field and decide where, you know, exactly to plant the plants, but in this general area to satisfy his need for buffering. So we, I think, I hope that, you know, Dr. Netland's agreeable to that. The second thing we've done on landscaping is, this is a blow-up of the, we call the triangular easement, this area right here, which is the current fifth tee. And if you, here's the roadway coming through here, I'm going to refer back to this plan. Here's the roadway here. We have a trail crossing for the snowmobiles to extend from the Crossing Brook property, on the, the town property actually, over to the, the current snowmobile trail by the fifth, the fifth hole here. And there is a series of landscaping elements along this, buffering along the tee area there. So that's been added to the drawings and the plant species all detailed out. So those are two of the buffer areas that we were, have been working on and refining. And David's done a super job refining those plans. We've done some minor tree line and grading revisions throughout the plan to deal with the engineering comments. There was a comment earlier, I'll just focus on this quickly, that, let me get the right drawing here, and I apologize. This unit right here originally was shown just encroaching on the 50-foot buffer to the outside of the property. And that was, has been adjusted, so there's a full 50-foot buffer behind that unit. The, in the area of the crossing, we've had some, quite a bit of discussion internally and with the DEP about the crossing. And let me, I'm going to focus on a larger scale plan, if I can find it. Bear with me, if you would. That's probably the best one. If people can understand this plan, I'm going to point, this is Little Acres Drive, and this is Leonard Lane that goes up to the cul-de-sac. And this is the stream coming through with a big, this is the concrete culvert. It's had quite a bit of design and effort. And these are the stone walls, the stone strong walls, which will be around these facilities, just as in Phase One. Same, same walls, same type of stone. And what we've done here, and Chris Landry's done a great job with this, is in response to DEP comments, we've redesigned the focal points. It's an underground stormwater system with a primary treatment area here with the underground chambers. And we redesigned that so it's a full 25 feet from the stream to meet the NERBA requirements for 25-foot setback. Before, that structure was something like this, maybe 10 or 15 feet from the stream. That's all been redesigned, and that's detailed on the, on the drawings that you have in-house and that has been reviewed by peer. This culvert here, in response to core requirements, we had an eight-foot or a nine-foot wide culvert outside. And we've doubled that to a 16-foot wide, either a double, a two-box culvert side by side, or working with Bill Pedelin at Summit Geoengineering, may design a full structural 16-foot wide culvert. And that's in response to the cores requirements that you do 1.2 times the stream bank full width. We took different measurements, and we've agreed to widen it. So that was a, a change in the culvert sizing. Location is basically the same, but, and, so that's really the, the biggest change from an engineering perspective on the project, is the detailing of that area. The other area that I want to focus on for a few minutes is the community center. And, if I can blow this up. Are people able to see that okay? Let me find that plan again. Do people see this well enough to understand if I point what we're looking at? Okay, so we've added some detail, both in response to peer comments and also per meeting we've had with staff, with Carla and Bill, about upgrading the community center and trying to figure out how this is going to work in a greater detail. And I think the first thing that you'll see from our previous meeting is that we had talked about parking for the community center being over in this area here behind the barn, or off the, it's the south end of the barn. And after looking at this, and there was communications with the board and with staff and others about, you know, the distance to walk to the community center, to the pool and whatnot, which made a lot of sense. So we regrouped, and we've got a neat solution for the parking. And we're going to have, this area here is, this, this texture here is gravel. And we've got the five gravel spaces here we had originally proposed. We have three spaces here in the pavement. Our ADA spaces, two over here, keeping the same circulation pattern in through here. And we've added a 24-lot parking area back here with two, two lights back in this area here. And that will serve the, the community center. It gives us a total of 35, I believe, 35 spaces total, 34, 34 spaces total for the community center. And we'd submitted an analysis of that to Bill Longley in our February packet on Addenda One to review. And, you know, if there's any comments, we'll be, you know, glad to address any comments of that. The second thing is that gives us an opportunity to connect that trail over to the, both to the end of the parking and to the barn. And the really unique thing about this, I want to point this out, because I think it's, it's pretty cool, is that this paddock is, the fence is going to remain, other than where the, the driveway comes in here. So you're going to have this parking area about right here with a stormwater, a stormwater metal buffer below it to treat the stormwater, a DEP buffer. And the parking's going to be inside the fencing. So it's, it's going to look very stately. It's also going to help to shield the parking. It's a three, three-row plastic fence. And, and it's just going to have a really nice feel when you drive up here and you park your car. You're going to feel like you're at, you know, Shelburne Farms or something. And it's, it's just, it's just by happenstance, but I think it'll be a really unique, you know, situation for parking there. And this is worth, again, there'll be a gate here, and the, the opening this gate here coming into the paddock. Back here. The other things we've done to the area, is again, we're showing the pool in this area here. It's a 64-by-20-foot pool, plus or minus, with a, you know, a deck around it. And we're, as Chris mentioned, we met with Bill and with Carla and, and talking about fire suppression, what's the use of the building going to be. And we're currently with our architect, Skarun Turgen, and also with Eastern Fire, looking at the, the fire requirements and the use requirements for space and assembly use and that sort of thing. And it's a, it's a work in process. And, and so we've submitted some, some data on that, and that'll be an ongoing process to determine how the internals of the building get, get used and get remodeled. We're all aware of the need to be consistent with the preservation area and the requirements of the, the ordinance. And so anything we're doing is really, you're not going to change the character, but more deal with the use of the building, ADA access and that sort of thing. The third thing we did, it's in, it's in your packet, and I can answer questions on it rather than get into the details. But because this building's on a septic system, which is located right here, is the lead field. It's a 303-gallon-a-day septic system. And we're not going to have, and we want to occupy, they want to build the pool early on and maybe occupy it next year. We've got a situation where, for, the, the system can handle a certain amount of use, a 300-gallon-a-day septic system. It's changing from residential to a, it's called a commercial type of a use. So we went through an analysis based on the state plumbing code and based on the, the amount of usage they would expect to see at the pool for the first, say, first five years as this project is built out. And the entire analysis is detailed in your, in your application. And to the point where we have confidence that we basically can live on that septic system for about three years. We'll monitor the flows, and when, and subject to, you know, Bill Longley's approval, we'll monitor that. And when the time comes that the septic system has reached its capacity, that's when the force main will have to be extended from whatever phase of the construction we are, up to the community center. So for instance, if, if that point in time, the project is in this phase here, coming this way, the force main would have to be extended that last bit up to the community center at the point that we reach the capacity of the wastewater system. So we've done a thorough analysis, used the plumbing code, used guidance from How Falmouth's current facilities and the Highland Green facilities are used. They have a pretty good record of how many people or how many, you know, how many people out of a household and how many out of a community might use the pool. And surprisingly, it's not everybody. It's maybe 10 or 15% of the people typically use the pool on a regular basis, based on their, on their, we've used that data. So again, that's all in your packet, in your, in your supplemental. At the last meeting, we also had talked about and agreed with having a sort of structural grass and a reduced pavement width in here. And we detailed that section of the road on the drawings. And, and that is shown clearly on the drawings and on the detailed sheets for that area. And that's, that was, again, was in compliance with the need to not expand impervious area within the preservation area. And I think that's the, the bulk of the, the changes around the community center. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. The last two things I think just want to mention is that town manager had asked for an interesting scenario is, what if there was, and power outages, and you've got 102 generators, what, what does it sound like? So we, we actually took it to task and talked with our electrician, with Mancini, with Gino Mancini and others. And we have a response in our application. I can't say it's a statistical, full data compliant response, but I think we have a pretty good response to that. And we don't think that'll be, be an issue. But I, I appreciate the question being asked, and we took a stab at it. So that, we did put some information in on our, on our application about that. Two other little things, I guess I talked about the parking lot, structural grass, phasing tables. Oh, the last thing was, we did in response to Chief Small's request, we made this here. He talked about having a fire turn around somewhere in this area of the project. So if they had to get to an emergency, and they didn't want to drive through, they could turn around and get back out again. We provided a 30-foot, I think by 50-foot apron here as you go into the barn, and then it turns into gravel, which was based, again, on our field test we did with the truck. So I think the chief, I believe, has accepted that as a turnaround area for his fire truck. Okay. Any questions about the changes of the plan revisions or updates from the board?
Yeah, Josh.
Rick, the only, in the town planners review, there's a, our, sorry, under the fire chief's review, I couldn't tell if he was saying, now that you've put a fire hydrant on Leonard Lane, he has no more concerns, or if you were to put a fire hydrant on Leonard. So is there a fire hydrant, is that in the plans?
Yes, through the chair.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, we've added a hydrant here, and the chief has signed off on that.
Thanks.
So there's one at the intersection and one two-thirds, three-quarters away up.
I have a question, Rick, on your summary. Under, there are two places, C, C3A, C6A, and then down at C12. There are, in terms of changes, no connections to external trail and no connection to internal trails. Do you have comments about how those, why those changes were made?
Yes, if you, if the board would like, I've got a, I'd like to discuss the whole trail situation, because that's been such a prominent.
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to? If you do, that's fine with me. I guess it's as good as any time, thank you.
Okay, I'd be happy to jump into that. So the, the trails, I want to start with, and it's in our application, and I'll certainly look at John and Chris to step in. But because of, not just because of COVID, but I think, and John and Chris can speak specifically to this, things have changed in six months. There's a new dynamic out there. There have been concerns with seniors on the other facilities, very real concerns about safety and security, especially with COVID, having trails behind their house. As you know, in Phase One, there's the snowmobile multipurpose trail that's right behind the units. And, and David Haynes and the, and Story Brothers have done a great job doing a nice buffer. If you're ever back there, it's all been planted, and it looks beautiful. But they are close to the units. And under the COVID situation, buying into a community that, the whole purpose you're buying in is for security, one of the main reasons in community, is, it's been a concern. And they can speak specifically, but I can, you know, what's been reported to me is there's issues with potential loss of sales, which are very real, not, not esoteric, but real, because of trails near people's units. Two is the idea that if you've got outside connectivity open to the public, all of a sudden, these trails show up on alltrails.com and then the other trail apps. All of a sudden, you've got a map, and you've got people coming and parking, say, at the town forest, walking through. And they become more than just trails that are used by the local public, who, they're still open to use. There's no sign saying you can, it's a good neighbor policy, but we don't, they don't want to advertise it. So there's just, and the whole security issue of having that open, they've had to rethink that. And we came into Phase One, a little more open, I think now they've had to clamp down. And it really, it's, it's an effective market. I mean, it just, it's a reality. And so what we've done, and we've had earlier meetings with John, and we had a different discussion. Things have changed when COVID came around. Talk a little bit about the trails. We're proposing the, we call the Valhalla Boundary Trail, which is this trail here right along the boundary of the golf course and the property. And that trail, we had the property line stick. That trail will be mostly, there's, most, this is kind of all wooded in here. Got opened up for the 17th green a little bit onto our side, as a matter of fact, when they cut it. But it goes right along the edge here. And at this point, I think the agreement is, at least, you know, internally, is that that trail will go down to the 17th. This is the bridge at the 17th, and use that bridge in a safe manner. A bell horn, you know, so that you're not, and it's a par three, so that you're not, you're not walking into a, someone actively driving off the tee and back up the property line. But the internal trails, we have two trails, a loop trail that follows the wooded section through here, and another connecting trail for the end of Northwind, or Northwind Farm Road, excuse me, that meanders along the buffer area here and connects back out. We haven't connected those. Whereas before, we Before, we talked about connecting them so that, I mean, you're visually going to be able to see the other trail through the woods, but they'll be separate. So the residents have a sense of security. Now, no one's saying you can't walk through the woods when you see a trail, no one, but it gives you the sense of two different trails. And the idea is that, I mean, we're looking at this trail, I mean, I certainly do, it's a linkage, a linkage to Greeley Road. And these trails are more for recreation and, you know, for the residents themselves. So the change that we have made on this, the loop, the Valhalla Trail, is that this section here by the, up towards the road, we're putting it on the other side of the fence, which would be the west side. This side of the fence right here, if you could follow the cursor, starting just below the 13th tee by this tree, it comes up from the car path, the old car path. And rather than having it out in the field and mowing a path as we discussed, the property line is probably anywhere from 12 to 18 feet on the other side of this fence, which is the west side, I'll call it the west side. So there's plenty of room to put the trail on this side of the fence and just take it up to Greeley Road. So that's the proposal now. And we've discussed that with John on that section right there. Let me just see if there's any other notes on the trails. The path to the community center, we've discussed, the phasing of the trails. I know that there was discussion or the recommendation by the Trails Committee to do the trails early, but the reality of it is that the trails, we're proposing and recommending strongly, the trails be constructed commensurate with a particular phase that's under construction. So in other words, Ocean View isn't going to go ahead and build these trails when it could be three years before this area is developed. They're going to wait till this area is developed because otherwise you'd have people potentially walking here and then you start construction and you've got people in construction. That's just one of the reasons conflicting. So they would be installed in phases as the project is installed. And that's the same way the utilities are going to be done, in phases, as the project moves forward on a, based on the absorption rate of the units and that sort of thing. Are there any other questions? I might have missed anything. Are there any other questions on trails that I might have missed? Oh, I'm sorry, the snowmobiles, just to be clear that you've been over at the last meeting.
Yes.
Snowmobiles were not.
Rick, excuse me, I think Steve, before you go to the air.
Rick, can I take a break in your presentation just for the moment?
Sure.
Some questions about the trail you've just described, the, I guess it's the western or the upper boundary on the chart that's being shown right now?
Right here.
Okay, so that, is there access off Greeley Road?
This shows a little bit better, off Greeley to this trail.
That's where you are right now.
The only access is just to the shoulder of Greeley Road. Again, as you know, there's no walking path, there's no sidewalk. It's just accessing, this is actually area here, this is actually moat by the border here, and it would just be a direct access from the road and, you know, a bush hog trail, marked trail down through by the, right, I'm sorry, by the 13th tee and then over to the existing trail right here.
Okay, so if one came into that trail from Greeley Road, where do you, where do you walk to? Do you connect within the property someplace?
We're proposing, no, no, you wouldn't connect. You would, you would walk along the boundary to get to the junction point here, which is really the takeoff for the new trail here that, from Phase One, if you remember, this was the trail up the boundary of the fifth hole that goes to, right behind the sixth tee, I wish I had a larger view here, and to the maintenance building, towards the maintenance building. And Toby flagged where he would like that to be and that's all been, it's all been, the base has been prepared, it's beautiful. They've got a machine that's gone out, it's scrubbed it, and that's going to be gravelled, you know, with a grass, gravel surface on that as per our plans. But that is, that has been opened up. If you wanted to walk it, you'll see it. And then that also connects to the town trail system here and it connects to the trail that, you know, the old trail that goes across the railroad tracks.
So it does connect in the interior?
It connects to these trails here, but not to the trails in this trail here or not to this trail here.
Right, the one that loops around the Leonard Lane?
Right, right, those would be disconnected.
Okay, but, but looking at the bigger picture, you follow that long trail in from Greeley Road, you get into the approximate middle of the parcel and you can in fact connect to other trails.
You could, you could walk up this trail and go to Rachel's. I mean, you know, and so the others, the connectivity, to me, the hinge pin is, this is a real connection point from all different directions. And now you've got a way, and I'm working with John, a way to get to Greeley Road. You know, it's a linkage to get to Greeley Road. And that's, I think that's, if the town feels that's important, that's a, that's a great linkage. Now, obviously in the winter, folks are using the cart path right here and making their way up this way. But this gives you, you know, outside of winter, winter use, subject to the, you know, any concerns from the golf course.
Rick.
Josh.
As best as I can tell from comparing the old trail map to, the only thing you've eliminated are the two connection points into those interior loop trails. Is that a correct statement?
It is. There were two little linkages here though that we had talked to John about on our field walk, off these little, these little.
Down on the east is southeast side?
Yeah, and they go to the, this, the old, the trail that goes to the railroad tracks, the unofficial crossing. I'll be honest with you, that, that just didn't make sense. We went out and looked at it. This, in my opinion, this trail, and I've talked to John, I've run this trail a number of times, and I never leave without wet feet. It's not in very good shape. And two, again, it would provide a direct linkage to a trail that's really not in great shape, we just didn't see a need for it, it just didn't make sense. So in keeping the idea of keeping things internal, there's plenty of opportunity for folks to use the sidewalks to get to the internal trail system.
But whatever trail is there, because there was an old snowmobile trail or something there, correct?
This is right here, it goes right down.
And so that, that still exists?
That trail exists.
Okay. And then did you add the, on the old one, and it is, it's kind of hard to see all the dashed lines, but was there a trail that ran the entire boundary, the property line?
Down here?
Nope, sorry, northeast area, along, between Valhalla and your property?
Yes, that's always been there. The discussion was the details of it.
Okay, maybe it just wasn't.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on trails? If not, I think that covers our changes. Again, if there are any questions on traffic, specifically Diane's here, any questions that Scott Anderson or Chris or John can answer. Just give you a quick update that, again, on the, as Chris mentioned, the DEP core review. We've, we've got comments back, we've got a resubmission package for the DEP and the core. The DEP was, is going to be re-reviewing stormwater with the updates. And if I could take a second to talk about stormwater, I think it's, it's not a big change, but we were asked by Dr. Netland to look at and analyze, I don't have the stormwater plane here, but I'm going to try to do the best I can. I think I could probably use this.
You can save out of this and I have that on the file folder.
Okay, yep. Let's grab the folder.
So if you minimize, up in the corner, and then in the file folder.
Is it PDF or?
No, it's right in the middle. Nope.
Nope.
Yep, that's a PowerPoint, close that one.
Yep, that's not it.
And right below it.
This one?
Yep.
You got it, okay.
And you should have Chris's binder in there.
Yep. Chris's binder. Okay, hang on a second. Actually, this will do it right here. You bear with me for one second. There we go. I can blow this up. I'm sorry to get so much into the weeds on this, but since we're here, I'll blow this up a little bit. Probably most of you don't look at these when you look, and I, I wouldn't encourage you to look at it too long, it gets pretty confusing and complicated, but let me focus on this area here. The, the property line is in the blue, here's the stream, and the railroad is down here and the major point of analysis, as we call it, is the railroad culvert. And this orange line is what we've computed to be the new floodplain here and then on the other side of the road up and through this area here, elevation 62, based on the analysis of the whole watershed. Dr. Netland had, we had analyzed what we call the point of analysis at the railroad culvert, which showed that there was no increase in peak rates for the, any of the storms analyzed, 210, 2500. He asked that, well, what happens, how do I know at my property line that there's not, fair question, there's not an increase? We've, so we've re-analyzed it at the property line and it shows no increase and no change in the flood elevation. So that, we have addressed that in the new stormwater report. I think that's really the major change of the report. And again, we've added the FEMA, updated the FEMA floodlines in here as shown in the orange. Okay, I think that's pretty much it on stormwater. So if there are no other questions, we'll just look for the board's comments.
So, yeah. Steve, go ahead, I was waiting to see if, so you're done, Rick, for now?
I am done, thank you.
Okay, open it to the board.
Rick, I've got to go back on trails. Just for background purposes, as I recall, in Phase One, am I right that there are no snowmobile trails as such?
Phase One does have a snowmobile trail. If I can, get this as full screen. I'll get this full screen, Chris, on here.
Oh.
Yep, hang on a sec, yep. It's different than mine.
Yeah. We'll alternate.
Yeah. Okay.
And, you know. No. There we go.
There's a tab that usually has, it's different than any of mine. There you go, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me. So Phase One, if you can see this plan, has the connecting trail here, which has been constructed, and it ties into the crossing here on the town property and it extends over to the, it extends across the brook and then connects to the existing trail right here. So there is a trail, snowmobile connection from the front of Longley's lawn, across from the town forest, through to Phase One, across the wetlands, up the hill, behind these units here, as I mentioned, and it's all, this has all been constructed and these have been buffered and landscaped.
Do you have a road crossing that has any trails?
Yes, and, yeah, thank you, Chris, for that. This crossing here, I'm going to try and pull this up. Bear with me and I apologize for flipping around. This is where that trail, as you know, the trail comes out and this one is the one that goes down the railroad tracks and our new trail comes up right, has been cut, comes right through here. In order to provide the winter trail connection, which is the major snowmobile trail marked is right here, we've provided a connection here. If it's determined it needs to be signed, we can do so, but we've got a detail on the plan, we're going to take the sidewalk, do a tip-down to grade, have a crossing and the same on the other side, so that there will be a, actually a crossing, strike crossing, but it will allow, you know, six feet, allow for a snowmobile to cross there. I think we'll probably, I think we might have added signage, if not, we probably should do that for final plan, indicating, you know, in the wintertime, snowmobile crossing or have the club sign it when they do their temporary wood signs.
There's a condition, Carla, on signage.
Yep, okay, yep, okay.
Okay, I admit that with respect to Phase Two, I'm perplexed on the status of snowmobile trails. And maybe it's just because the maps are somewhat difficult to read insofar as trail designation is concerned, but can you brief us on the status of the snowmobile trails?
Okay, the current trails, again, this is where we were just pointing a second ago, the current trails reach out into the golf course and connect by the, onto the golf cart path, I believe, on the fifth, and then by the fourth, and follow the golf cart path over to the 17th, up the hill. And I believe at this point, they either connect, and someone can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, they connect, the cart path, I'm sorry, goes up through here, either connect through here and up and around the 13th tee and loop up by the Yarmouth Water District land, I guess, that opening and come back down. What the, what the club had asked is, geez, could we provide a connection from here to here? And the answer was no, snowmobiles are not, number one, we don't believe they're permitted in the preservation area, and two, no, we don't think it's consistent with the desires of Ocean View. And so they've denied the use of this for snowmobile access. This would be a walking pedestrian trail, not snowmobile. So there's no snowmobile access on the property on Phase Two?
No snowmobile access?
No snowmobile access, Phase Two.
Okay, because there was some material or a brief, small sketch in our materials showing a rerouting of a snowmobile trail. And I found that confusing.
I think that was. Hi, good evening, everyone, Scott Anderson. I think there were a couple of rounds of comments from the Trails Committee in the packet. And so this was an issue we went into in some depth at the January meeting and talked about this. And I think that had been the pre-January submittal from the Trails Committee. We had a big discussion about it at that point in time on the long lines that Rick had, had noted. I believe that the Trails Committee has dropped the request to go, that connector has gone through in their most recent comments, and I think that's the history. And I'm looking to everybody to confirm that I've got that right. Thumbs up from the back.
All right.
You missed one crazy meeting and then so we'll.
It was a YouTube video.
It was a YouTube video and, but that had, that had been pre-January.
All right. I'll just close with a, just a personal observation, and that is that when we get to final plan review, I would find it interesting to see an exclusive trail map of the premises without all of the other features and roadways and building envelopes and cottages and so forth. But if, if it were possible to produce entirely just a trail map with appropriate colors to distinguish one type from another, if that's necessary.
Maybe using the aerial, I think, I, through the chair, I agree. I think, I think the aerial reads better. I think we can come up with something that graphically is a little better than the, than this plan here. And I apologize for that, but we can certainly do that.
It's okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So other questions by the board, Josh?
Rick, in your February 25th letter to Carla, in talking about traffic circulation and planning, there was a please provide more detail and then anticipate a use of the existing driveway from Greeley Road to the proposed community center. And the response was the driveway would likely be used in a limited capacity by the Phase Two residents traveling to restaurants or shopping in Yarmouth. So, and then access, that isn't the full response. But, and it is six months since we talked about this, but I think that's a change from what we proposed or what we were discussing at the last meeting, which was that it wasn't going to be open, basically it was going to end at the Godso farmhouse. Like you couldn't go from Little Acres or Long Acres or whatever that road is, all the way to Greeley.
Through the chair.
Am I accurate in that recollection or?
I think there might be some misunderstanding and through the chair, respectfully. I think the discussion was, was the opposite, that we originally didn't want to have a formal road connection to begin with.
Right.
Through public safety, they requested that this, what was going to be just gravel, you know, road in the field, so people could walk, be upgraded to support, you know, a paved road to support vehicles, emergency vehicles, which we've done. And then the question was, there's not going to be any gates, might be, you know, a sign post here or there, but no, no formal gates provided on the road as per the public safety request. What happens here, what, this was not, this, I'll talk about this piece in a little more detail to refresh everyone's memory, is that this linkage here, this exists today, is gravel. The pavement stops here and this is all gravel, all the way down to, down to the bridge and beyond is a tow road. So the board had requested that this be open. We complied by keeping this, a request for a waiver, keeping the existing road, it'll be grounded and resurfaced at 14, it's roughly 14 and a half feet wide. We did a fire truck test with the chief, with assistant, the deputy, to determine that, in fact, that does meet the standard for the largest truck that you have in your service to make this curve and come in and turn around in this area and make it back out again. Again, we showed the video or photos from the video, I think, to the board. And three was, this linkage here, because it couldn't be paved, we felt that if it was paved, it violated the condition of the ordinance, which talks about no additional impervious area within the 500-foot buffer. And the 500-foot buffer just scooches beyond this point right here. So we came up with a detail, and it's, I'd have to refer to one of the detailed drawings on a separate file here, but I can hopefully show you. We had presented a detail to the board and talked about it at the January meeting, and then we incorporated that specific detail into the drawing set. And I apologize, it's not right here, I could certainly find it, but it's 18 feet of pavement, I think it's eight, six, 12 feet of pavement with structural grass shoulders. Not sure what that detail is.
It's in the greater file, just keep talking.
So anyway, we incorporated that change into the drawings and it felt, I think, I As, and, and it felt, I think, I believe, town attorney, consult, was consulted and agreed that that would comply with the intent of the preservation, uh, conditions, preservation area conditions.
Yeah, while Chris is looking for the detail, essentially what we needed to do was make sure that the road was beefy enough to meet the chief's standards for the trucks to pass over, but not make the kind of existing gravelway any larger in square feet, the portion that was in the preservation area. So we went kind of back and forth with Natalie Burns. We think we can do that with an engineered solution, which is...
Could, could you get just a little closer to like, make sure, sorry.
Take turns. Uh, with an engineered solution, which, when you look at the road, it will look the same width as the existing one, so the impervious doesn't grow, but we will have rebuilt the road underneath the grass shoulders to be beefy enough to hold the trucks when they, when they turn the corner. And so I think you're right in remembering that the plan was never to have this be an accessway or encouraged as such. Everybody kind of acknowledged that, you know, once someone is living here and they wanna go to Yarmouth for dinner, they're gonna figure out maybe on this end of the development, it might be, um, quicker to go there. But again, these were things that we had done really to address public safety concerns.
Right, I reme- I mean, I remember the discussions about public safety and making sure the trucks could, and they could, and all that. I just thought it, originally, I, we're going back, you're testing my memory. But I thought it was that, that, that you di- were trying to discourage people from using the access to Greeley. And now I think what I'm hearing is, we're not really discouraging it other than it's, may not be all that practical and people may just decide not to use it because it's windy and narrow and slow and, and honestly, I think personally, that's a great solution, at least on the face of it, so.
I mean, I think our, our, our view and hope is that we're still not gonna discourage it, but it's not really part of the plan, I think, maybe the language...
Make it overly practical.
Yeah, maybe the language in the February submitted was just kind of acknowledging that, you know, people have talked about it. When someone figures this out, they may not go. And given that there won't be a gate or other physical, a physical obstruction, you know, we wanna be realistic. Some folks will go that way. But again, for all the reasons we've discussed, the nature of the community and the philosophy as Rick has laid out, the goal is to really have everyone going to Tuttle, and this is just gonna be for access to the community center. And, and for emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
Other questions, Anne?
Okay, I just have one question, it's a clarification, I'm sorry, a clarification on the internal trails. Uh, do they just go around the clusters? Is that all they really do, if they don't connect to the outside?
Excuse me, yes, the, through the chair, the answer is...
In phase two?
Yes, phase two.
Anne, just, just to be careful, that's the old trail map.
This one?
You do have a new trail map in the plan, but I asked Christina to give us an old trail map. So the printed version is the old trail map.
So that's why it's unclear.
Maybe, maybe not, but the, the loops around the kind of clusters were, are in both of them.
Okay, so, so is that all it is, is just loops around the clusters, the internal trails?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
No, that's fine.
Are there other questions? All right, none at this time. I will now open, uh, the public, uh, hearing to anyone that would like to come up. Please just give your name and address. Rick?
Rick Dohm, Fork at Alba Lane. It's not my issue, but the proposed trail to Greeley Road, I believe, is now in essentially Dick Ingram's yard. And that house is quite tight to the property line. I, to me, that would be an issue of concern, uh, but I would leave that to the board to explore or not.
Rick, could I mention that I do have, at the end of the public hearing, I will read the letters from regarding that home? So they have sent, they couldn't be here tonight, so I do have the letters.
What, what is my issue, a few of them? I'm curious about where this project is in the process. Uh, we've had, I think, I believe this is the third preliminary review meeting. I saw Rick had on his slide, I think, preliminary approval. This is the second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is for preliminary approval tonight?
Okay, I'm not sure the agenda says that, but I may have misread it. I, I, um, am curious as well, I, I, from when we permitted the Norton Building, I thought there was a change in policy for the planning board, which did not allow the process to go forward, uh, and it may be in the next phase, but without actually having a DEP permit in hand. So that is not a limitation here tonight?
Not for preliminary, for final.
Yeah, and it would be, later it would be a condition of approval, that and others. I think we have a, a list of a few things that are pending.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I thought you couldn't actually get to that final phase without having it in hand. I think we were held up for six months or something waiting for DEP, but...
For final.
For final, yeah. Um, okay, so what, thank you for that clarification. Um, my primary concern is traffic. You know that we have a disagreement with Ocean View about the legality of what they're doing. I'm not gonna waste the board's time on that tonight. Uh, the, uh, points that I would make, having now lived with phase one for a couple of years, are that, uh, I, I cannot get my arms, at least for the next six or eight years, uh, when construction is ongoing, around this estimate of four hundred trips, uh, a day. The number of Mancini electric vans alone that have come in and out of that development, uh, this spring, would exceed that. It, the, the, this constant flow of service vehicles and work vehicles, I would concede that the actual resident vehicles are relatively modest. But where, those of us on that end of, of Tuttle Road are being asked now to accept all the traffic from an extremely protracted, uh, construction process. And I, I just urge the board to consider that. I understand that the town council enacted something that was a restriction on Greeley Road. I understand that the applicant doesn't want a connection. Um, I've, I personally have mixed feelings about it. But all of that construction traffic is both a disruption to my peace and enjoyment and frankly, in my mind, a safety hazard for the residents of phase one. So I, I urge the board to look at that closely. Um, I would also make the observation that I think you have a house of cards with your various subdivision, private road standard approvals, this and that. I understand that the town attorney has weighed in on aspects of that. I have read those ordinances, I can't get from A to B. I, I, I don't see it. The question I have of the applicant is, uh, the status of Lonnie Allen's old garage, that's being used as sort of a workshop, uh, for some of the contractors or perhaps a storage building for the, uh, maintenance people. I'm not clear, but there seems to be a fair amount of activity there. Is that going to continue in perpetuity?
Could, if, if they wanna answer that, could they come, could some, Chris or somebody come to the mic so people at home can hear?
With regards to, it's Lonnie's old horse barn, which, uh, is a structure that is, uh, directly beyond Lonnie's property line. Is that accurate? Uh, to the right-hand side towards, uh, the, uh, more east lane or more east way side of the, uh, phase one development. And, uh, right now, it is a temporary laydown area, a storage shed. In the longer term, we were thinking that we might retain it for maintenance purposes. You know, just since it's an all, it's already a constructed building and, uh, doesn't seem to be bothering Lonnie. Um, and we have his permission to do that. Um, and, uh, again, I wasn't aware of any other concerns about that.
Thank you, Chris. Rick?
I'm, I'm not sure if that's on the phase one or the phase two plans. Um, and I would at least urge some conversation, uh, around that status if it's not. It, it is not disruptive a lot, but it seems to occasionally be a place, you know, a early evening-type setup for, uh, the crews. So, again, I urge you to, to look at the road situation and the traffic situation carefully, and I appreciate your time.
Yeah, just, I, I'll just make a comment about what you said. I'm thinking what, uh, how the planning board, we, we, I don't think we can dictate that a certain number of construction vehicles come through. I, I've been, I, I've been in that situation now with four hundred vehicles, but, and it was not pleasant, but I, I honestly don't know, maybe somebody up here could address that, but I don't know how we would remedy, other than not allowing the construction, how do we do that? So that's just off...
Well, if I may, I think the remedy is to at least have a construction entrance off of Greeley Road so that phase two can be built out from that access point.
From Greeley.
Yeah, uh, and I, uh...
And then we have restrictions on impervious?
Yeah, and with no intent to be argumentative, the town council spent approximately two hours of their time approving a recommendation from staff to create that zone. I, I would think that there would be a mechanism for them to modify that approval if it was in the best interest of the community, so. I just, uh, I, I, in this, this, well, I'm not gonna continue on.
That's fine, thank you very much, I appreciate it, we all do. Uh, others, uh, John, you have comments?
Uh, John, John Jensenius, recreational trail subcommittee, lands and conservation commission. Uh, several comments, uh, first of all, uh, on the, uh, the sidewalk or stone dust trail. Back in January, uh, that was proposed to be a mowed grass trail. At this point, I will say that, uh, a stone dust trail with a gravel base is much better. However, uh, we're talking about a subdivision that has sidewalks connecting, uh, not quite one hundred homes. It only seems to make sense that, uh, that sidewalk connect to the community center for those homes. So, um, the trails subcommittee has, uh, felt all along that it was appropriate to have the sidewalk the whole way through. As far as, uh, some of the other comments on the trails, uh, we do agree that times have certainly changed in the last six months or so. However, the first home is, uh, not scheduled to be built until 2023, and hopefully times will have changed again between now and then so that, uh, we don't want, we don't think it's appropriate to, uh, make decisions now based on the exact case as far as the health, uh, of the people, uh, that are going to be living there. Uh, as far as the security, certainly in phase one, some of those homes are very close to the trail. And I can understand why people would be uncomfortable having people walk by. In this phase, uh, it looks like the trails are located more downhill and away from the homes, as near as I can tell. And I, I don't see it as much, as, as much of an issue with this phase. Having said that, some of the more specifics on that, the boundary layer trail that, uh, they're proposing that goes along the, along Valhalla, I am not aware that, uh, Toby at the golf course, uh, has, uh, in any way approved that. The last I talked to Toby, uh, he was concerned with having people walking through that area in the summertime. So I would like some clarification from Toby that that actually is a, a valid trail or is appropriate. Because last I talked to him, he would, he had concerns, especially having people cross the bridge, which I believe is right in the middle of Fairway. So, um, so anyhow, I would like to hear from Toby before we, uh, concede that that's going to be an appropriate, uh, location for a connecting trail between, uh, which, which would go from Greeley Road through to, uh, Tuttle Road. So as far as, uh, the portion that's on the white fence, whi- which side of the white fence, to be honest, the trails, uh, subcommittee doesn't care which side of the white fence it goes on, but we do have a question on who's going to maintain that trail, uh, since it will still be on Ocean View property. And of course, there is the issue with the homeowner that has been maintaining, uh, that particular side of the fence right near Greeley Road right now. As far as the connecting trails, uh, to the loops within the development, those connecting trails are more likely to be used by the residents to get out rather than outsiders coming in. So I think at this stage, it's important to, uh, keep those connecting trails in the plans. Again, we're talking about 2023 to 2026, as far as when they're gonna be building those trails. So it seems like, uh, that, uh, that's a good idea, just to keep those in there, so they're in the plans. I will say I did, uh, at Rick's suggestion, I did, uh, take a walk out, uh, to phase one today. I came across, uh, a new resident, one that said he had moved in about three days ago. And he was very excited to learn that there were these connecting trails, uh, that went through Crossing Brook and up to the golf course. So I had a slightly different, uh, experience than I heard from others today. As far as the snowmobile trail, uh, no argument, uh, from the trails subcommittee. Uh, we've learned that the restrictions as far as the field next to Greeley Road, it would not be permitted. And as far as, uh, the timing of the trails, again, they're not really in a construction zone. Uh, we prefer they be put in early, but to be honest about it, it really isn't going to make that much difference because I think they're gonna be used more by residents than anybody else. So no, no real issue there. As far as the tote road, uh, I think that people could use the tote road now, the general public. I don't think that needs to be advertised, but just have it open so if people wanna walk through up until the point when construction starts on phase two. Uh, and at that point, of course, it's gonna be closed because of the construction. So that's, uh, a quick look, and if there are any questions, I'll...
Any questions before John leaves, I guess? All right, thank, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public want to make comments? Then I'll read, uh, a letter, probably good, good timing based on what John just mentioned. There's a letter from Hall Thompson, two forty Greeley Road, uh, saying, "My property abuts the Ingram property at two thirty-six Greeley Road, which abuts the above development," referring to Ocean View Phase Two. "My sole comment relates to the proposal to run a trail for snowmobiles and other uses on the northwest side of the white fence, along the northwest side of the subject property. That trail would run less than fifty feet from the Ingrahams' bedroom window, creating a noise pollution problem. In addition, the distance between the fence and the utility pole that shows up on the map near the Ingrahams is only eight feet. That would spell disaster for two snowmobiles meeting there. For those reasons, I would propose running the trail on the other side of the fence, the southeast side, where there is plenty of room. Other borders of the development are required to have a fifty-foot setback. It seems like this should apply here as well. Other options would be to run the trail along the project access road or the utility access route. These would save considerable bridge building expenses. The proposed route, uh, transverses a very wet drainage area between the referenced utility pole and the vicinity of the twelfth Valhalla Green, in addition to the brook that bisects the Godso Farm." Thank you for listening, Hall Thompson. And then as a follow-up, uh, letter from Judy Ingram, referred to by Hall. "Thank you, Hall. I'll jump on here to express my concern as well. The trail proposed feels very close to being too much a part of my backyard, considering the less than fifty feet from my bedroom window. A great time to ride is at night, and over the years, rogue snowmobiles have used that path many times. I am well aware how loud it can be. As for the eight-foot space between tree and utility pole, the obvious solution for the snowmobilers would be to swerve out into the yard, which is another concern for me. The tree has widespread, uh, above-the-ground roots as well. I'm not sure if anyone has actually walked the property, uh, to assess the feasibility of the proposed trail. Hall makes an excellent point, too, about the area beyond the pole being very wet. I visualize slushy conditions with the slightest bit of travel through it. I agree with Hall. It appears there is enough open and drier land on the in- inner side of the fence to satisfy the same outcome. Probably much better. I doubt that I am able to make the meeting on Tuesday, but did wanna have my concerns heard, Judy Ingram, uh, two thirty-six Greeley Road." So I think based on what John said and, um, given the points made, the snowmobile trail, do you com- Rick, do you have any comments about the location of that trail at that point? The white fence point?
No, again, uh, our, we'll, we'll be happy to meet with Ms. Ingram. We recognize, let me just get this, it's the section right here is right next to her. It's, it's mowed to her lawn and beyond there, it's sort of like a scrub and there's, it doesn't show well, but vegetation and trees, which probably are better shown in this photo here. This, this line here, and it opens up. We'll be happy to meet with Ms. Ingram if there's concerns about... and it opens up. We'll be happy to meet with Ms. Ingram if there's concerns about pedestrians. But I think it sounds like both of those letters were focused on the, the idea of snowmobiles, and that is, as you know, is not going to happen. So, if she has concerns about pedestrian use, we'd be happy to meet with her, and if it needs a privacy fence or something like that, we'd be happy.
So, all right, so that I'm clear, then, snowmobiles would not be allowed in that area that she's referring to?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Because that would help. Hopefully, she gets that message. I think I missed that. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? So, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for additional questions or comments. Josh?
Rick, have you heard any more about the floodplain? I know you're asking them to reconsider the 100-year floodplain. Have you heard anything back on that?
No, we haven't, we haven't got anything formal on that yet, but it's in process. We have mentioned that to Carla and Bill Longley as well. Your current packet, I apologize, here's, I'm flipping through, your current packet contains an updated flood analysis, and again, stormwater plans already presented by, that Chris put together, so there's a flood analysis in there that talks about the pre and post conditions and flood elevation. One of the benefits, I'll be honest with you, of going through this process, assuming it's approved, is that the current, for Mr. Netland, the current flood zone would look something like, it's on your survey plans, looks something like, you know, because it follows the brook, comes back up in here, and it goes up the hill about 40 feet in elevation to the top of the hill. It's an error, that's why we did it. It will actually unencumber a whole bunch of Mr. Netland's field, which otherwise would have had to gone through the same process. So, that's, I think, a benefit to, glad to provide to Mr. Netland.
So, one other question, Rick, that was addressed earlier regarding the longevity, I think, of the project and the number of vehicles coming and going. I would think Mancini eventually, that they would not have a lot of vehicles going and coming, just because they'll, their, their work would be done. Is that correct, or is that?
I, I think it's, it's a number of things. I think construction, there's no denial that construction traffic is going to happen. It's modulated. Most of the people leave around three, honestly. But to that point, it's something internally, we've met with our contractor, Story Brothers, and we're thinking about how to do construction access with phase two as well, because Ocean View also doesn't want to get too far into this phase and have construction trucks in front of two-thirds of, you know, the residents. So, there's a point where we'll probably have a construction access road, I'm using my pen, I'm sorry. Construction access road may, may follow the driveway in for a temporary period of time to build the later phases. We haven't worked all that out, but at some point, there will probably be construction access from Greeley Road, and we'll work, you know, work to figure that out with the contractors when it makes the most sense. And a lot of it has to do with how the utilities are being phased, you know, as I mentioned, and I'll repeat myself, but for the community center, you know, initially for fire protection, it's on a well now. We may be installing this first section of the water main and stopping here to get water to the community center when it's ready to be occupied to get the fire protection. And then, the rest of the water line will come from phase one and work its way along. It may be a number of years before it connects back up again in loops, but ultimately, there will be a loop, that sort of thing. So, is that helpful?
I appreciate you addressing it. Thank you. Other, other questions, Josh?
I just have one more. Carla, in your March 12 review, you had a question about whether or not there's a, we need a revised MDOT entrance permit. Have you come to any resolution on that?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
The applicant maintains that it covers both phase one and two. I'll look at that for final approval.
And has C.B. Mahar made any opinion, I mean, do they review the traffic stuff, too, the MDOT stuff, too, or?
They look at everything, yeah.
Okay. So, Dan?
Yeah, could we have a clarification about the, what authority we have over this trail situation? I mean, we always encourage interconnectedness, I think, as Ocean View wanted to originally. But do we have authority to say they must connect their internal trails to the external trails in this development situation?
Well, my guess is no, but I am not the.
No.
I'm not the answer.
Okay. Answer's no.
Okay. And then my other question is, do we have any authority over snowmobile trails?
No.
In terms, not in terms of mandating them in a, in a subdivision, I think it's.
No, right. Okay. So, yeah, okay. And we really don't have any authority then to tell the trail to go the other side of the fence. I mean, that's, where does that come from? They're, they're doing that because.
Out of courtesy, perhaps, in consideration for neighbors and goodwill.
And because they have a club, and it's been around for a while, and they've been using this, and.
But given that, now that we know they're not going to be there anyways, I think, in that area.
Right. Right. But they'll be the other side of the fence. They will do that then, no doubt.
So, to me, given that a waiver, this preliminary hearing, the waiver requested, I think Josh's point, we don't have clarification. So, I'm looking for guidance on how we deal with that, you know, the private road issue, the, you know, whether or not, speaking of authority, we have that authority if, if the senior housing community overlay doesn't specify that. Carla, please.
I think the reason I was stumbling a little bit when Josh asked that question is it hasn't been the case that a subdivision's asked to have a private road in a long, long time. So, the town's policy is, if you build a road to the public road standards, then the town will consider accepting it as a public road. But that doesn't require you to build to those standards.
Right. I do remember you saying that before. If in the future, the town, the development wants it to become a public road, it had to have met those standards.
Right.
So, what does that mean, though, in terms of the requested waiver that Josh was addressing, number five? Because we've granted the other four.
I think Rick is right. I mean, I think this supersedes, you know, this specifically has road standards in the overlay district, so it would supersede the existing road standards in the rest of the subdivision ordinance, I believe. And that does call for a five-foot paved sidewalk. So, I think they, I think they would need one. My question is, does that then revert back to, but it doesn't say we don't need town engineer, you know, a positive opinion from the town engineer and town planner. So, now I don't know. I, I don't think I'm ready to weigh in on a waiver right now. My general opinion is, I'm okay with it, as long as there is a condition of approval that they maintain it, you know, so that they're safe, you know, people can use it safely in all seasons. I mean, that's my general opinion. If, if we can do a waiver, I think I would be in favor of a waiver like that. But I would ask Carla, between preliminary and final, to just kind of, I don't know, I, I guess I kind of, I'm not exactly sure where the overlay district ends, and where the, the standard, you know, and where you revert back to the existing standards.
I think their attorney has.
Oh, maybe.
Whenever a lawyer talks, you want to make sure you're helpful, so I've been hemming and hawing. But I think you're right. You know, we have, I mean, the general rule is the specific ordinance takes precedence over the general. And so, to the extent there is anything in the overlay district, and that would include this sidewalk on one side for any road connecting to Tuttle, which is why we're talking about it, then, then the 250 and the table two doesn't apply. You're kind of under the overlay district. And so, the footnote at the bottom of table two only applies to things on table two. Now, in a perfect world, there'd be general language, but I think the board has general authority to grant waivers when you find that it's not necessary for public safety and the like. And so, that's how that would go if you were comfortable with it, and that's how you take that footnote in the table, kind of out of the legal question.
Well, all right. But now, I'm going to ask you two. Number one, I preface this by saying, I appreciate your legal opinion, but I.
You like the town better.
Would like to know what the town, no, I'm not, I'm not saying I like it better, but I wouldn't mind hearing what the town's legal opinion is. But I would also say, you know, are you, is, if there is access from Greeley Road, when does it no longer become an access road connecting from Tuttle, but it's an access road connecting from Greeley? I mean, does, does any, anything that traces itself to Tuttle Road is now an access road to Tuttle? I mean, I think that would, the answer to that question is yes, it would be an access road if there was no access from Greeley, Greeley Road. But now, there is at least limited access from Greeley Road. Is it an, you know, is it still an access road from Tuttle Road?
And that, that might be an.
Again, I think the safer thing is if we can do a waiver, I'm okay with the waiver, I, you know, with the condition of approval that it gets maintained, and I don't know how other people feel. But I mean, my, my feeling is, let's see what Natalie says. I don't think you need the waiver right now. We can do the waiver at final. You can, we can hear if, if the town wants to go to Natalie or not, they can weigh in on that.
Carla, did you have a comment?
I'm just wondering, Rick, if you don't get a determination on the waiver request, if that's going to affect your DEP review for stormwater?
It should not, because we've already taken into consideration that the amount of impervious. If there was a sidewalk, it'd be the same amount.
Good. Okay.
But if I, if I could just add one, I don't want to belate of the argument, understand where the board's at. But if I could just read something and sort of, just a little salt onto this, is that under the senior housing community, the purpose, you know, these regulations are intended to provide flexibility and creativity in the design and development of senior housing communities, while ensuring that senior housing communities are designed and developed to maintain a high degree of quality and integrate well with existing neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is a case where we recognize the need for connectivity from point A to point B. We've provided it in a very creative way that utilizes the nature, the field, the natural conditions, and we don't feel, in our opinion, a sidewalk doesn't fit within the character of, of the area. So, if that helps the argument, I think there's language in there that would certainly help to say, yeah, that's a pretty creative solution to getting people from point A to point B.
And also, as part, and we're happy to kind of go with Natalie and make sure she can give you, I mean, I think that your, the issue about the private, if you're just under the subdivision rules, the reason why the word private is important is it defines a certain street that has to be under the 50 trips per day. And then, when you go to the, the table two, there are different standards that apply to roads with less, it doesn't say private roads, but you kind of know how to connect it. Once we come over here to the overlay, I think the idea was, these would be, if not private, kind of limited to the traffic within these developments. And so, you don't really have the private-public distinction in the overlay zone. You just have different standards that you have to apply. And so, I don't think the, the board ever has to make a finding as to whether these are public or private, because we're kind of carved out of those table two standards and that concept of the plus or minus 50. Instead, we're based on the number of units and other triggers. So, but I think we can tee it up and have Natalie come back to the board and say, thumbs up, thumbs down, and give you some comfort.
I, I think at this point, just so everybody, I, I would be okay voting for preliminary approval to get that answer and find out. That is a, I mean, if, if that's an issue, it's going to be an issue to me. I mean, if Natalie says it can't be private, and you say, no, it's got to be private, now I have an issue. But I'm okay moving.
I think I agree with that, Josh. And I, you know, I still highly respect John and the committee's comments about their thinking about what, what should be there. So, if that's the case, then we don't need that waiver tonight. So.
I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I, you may want to do, they may want a straw poll just to know if people, people want to do that. But, but again, I mean, you know where I'm, I am. I'm okay with it philosophically. The question is, can we do it?
Any comments?
I'm okay with it philosophically with the condition.
Across the board, what, how do you, how does everybody feel about it? Just, just to get a.
I agree with Josh.
Yeah, I think Josh has raised a good point, and I think that we can proceed tonight and yet reserve decision on the waiver for the next time around.
Well, I think if they need a waiver to accomplish their building purposes, I would be in favor of doing the waiver tonight. But on the other hand, if that's not necessary, then I think we could, we should wait.
Jason?
I think it makes sense to put it off. In general, I don't have an issue with the creative solution of something other than a paved sidewalk, the crushed stone. It still gets from point A to point B. I personally think with the underlying ordinance, it makes sense to have some sort of a sidewalk, even if it's crushed stone, go the rest of the way to Greeley Road. I understand they're not going to be encouraging that sort of walking path with the typical resident that might be there, but people are still going to do it. And the ordinance says that that sort of access road should have a sidewalk. So, I think it'd be nice, even if it's just the five-foot crushed stone, that something is done there. So, I'm okay if it's not a paved sidewalk right next to the road, but something that satisfies the underlying ordinance, I think, makes sense. And part of a big reason that we have the planning board is not just to interpret the ordinance, but near the top of the list is looking out for safety of the residents. And there's going to be people walking there, including in the wintertime, and, you know, we should give them a path, even if they don't go all the way and walk on Greeley Road. We should give them a path that is in the ordinance in a safe manner. So, I'm okay if it's something other than paved, but I think something, something should be there all the way to Greeley Road.
So, it seems fair to conclude that we're fine tonight if we get to the motion after the next step, just to include that as part of the motion. So, at that point, then, finding of facts, so let me go through where I just was. So, let me go through this, this list. Number one is pollution. The parcel is above sea level. There is a Zone A area indicating likely flooding, but the applicant is filing an appeal to FEMA for a re-designation of this area. The area where homes are located is not in the Zone A area. The project will use public water and sewer, other than the community center initially. Groundwater impact assessment was provided by the applicant and reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Sufficient water. The subdivision will be served by public water. There is a letter on file dated July 31, 2018, and perhaps a newer one? Maybe not. From the Portland Water District stating that the district's ability to serve the proposed project consisting of 50 to 100 housing units. An updated letter from P, Portland Water District is required for final review and should be based on the final water supply design. Based on this information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Municipal water supply. The subdivision will utilize public water. There is a letter on file dated July 31, 2018, from the Portland Water District stating the district's ability to serve the proposed project. An updated letter from PWD is required for final review and should be based on the final water supply design. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Erosion. The applicant has submitted an erosion and sedimentation control plan that is consistent with the current main erosion and sediment control best management practices. The town engineer has reviewed and approved the erosion and sedimentation control plan. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Traffic. A traffic study was performed by Main Traffic Resources, and Main Department of Transportation entrance permit was issued for phase one and for an anticipated 40 to 50 units in phase two. Staff has requested and updated Main Department of Transportation permit and provided for final review, which reflects the actual number of units in both phases. And that also addresses the additional entrance from Greeley Road. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Sewage disposal. The project will utilize. The project will utilize public sewer. There is a letter from PWD stating there is sufficient capacity to serve the additional units to be built in Phase Two. There is a letter dated January 14, 2020, from Town Manager Bill Shane stating that the town agrees to accept the sewer design flow from the project. A charge of $500 for each of the units will be charged to the applicant. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Municipal solid waste disposal. Cumberland provides curbside trash collection and recycling through a contracted waste hauler. Based on a conversation with the Director of Public Services, the addition of 52 new homes in Phase Two will not cause a burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Letters are on file from the relevant state agencies stating that the subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. Plans have been reviewed and approved by the town planner, the town engineer, and town department heads. There are minor planned changes that are required for final review. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Financial and technical capacity. Technical capacity is evidenced by the use of the following experts: a professional engineer, a licensed land surveyor, a traffic engineer, an architect, and a licensed soil scientist. Financial capacity is evidenced by a letter dated October 14, 2019, from Kennebunk Savings, stating that bank has approved financing of the infrastructure for the project, and that Oceanview at Cumberland has the financial capacity to complete the land development and construction project as proposed. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Surface waters, outstanding river segments. The proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of the mapped wetlands or unreasonably affect the shorelines of the stream on the parcel. Plans include a Main Department of Environmental Protection 75-foot stream setback to protect the resource. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Groundwater. The project will be served by public sewer. Infiltration of stormwater is limited to the installation of best management practices along the access road, which meet all DEP standards for treatment of stormwater prior to discharge of groundwater. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Flood areas. The parcel is shown on FEMA floodplain maps as being in Zone C, parentheses, area of minimal flooding, and Zones A, and Zone A. A better, I'm sorry, a letter of map amendment is being proposed to FEMA to adjust Zone A. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. Stormwater. A stormwater management plan was submitted as part of the application packet and has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer for conformance with Chapter 250-38 of the Cumberland subdivision ordinance. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. Freshwater wetlands. All wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been delineated and mapped by Mark Hampton, Associate Incorporated, and shown on the project plans. The applicant has submitted plans to Main Department of Environmental Protection and Army Corps of Engineers and is awaiting approval. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met for preliminary approval. River, stream, or brook. There is a stream on the property which is depicted on the plans. Based on the information provided, the standards of this section have been met. So a list of conditions of preliminary approval.
I make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as written.
Discussion of the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Second, we need a second.
Second, second, all those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Christina? Thank you, Josh.
Then I will make a motion that we approve preliminary major subdivision review for Oceanview at Cumberland, tax map R04 lot 34A, subject to the single proposed condition of preliminary approval.
I second it. Bill, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you. It's unanimous.
I think so.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your consideration.
So the last item is administrative matters, new business. Anyone? Carla, nothing?
No.
Okay. And then H? Anybody have a motion?
Just one question. Question for Carla. Looking ahead to August, Carla, anything that is known to be coming up on the agenda?
Not certain, not at this time.
I see, okay, good, thanks.
Will they be back? Do you think they're going to be back in August, or are they going to need more time?
I think they're going to need more time with getting their agency approvals, especially DEP.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Tell Natalie I expect full...